Oh, God, it is, isn't it? Good evening and welcome. I'm Chris Ray, and with me this evening are Deputy Council President Zach Hall and Council Member Barbara D. Michelle. And I'm going to call to order the December 12th, 2023 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting. There will be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comment after the presentation in council questions and answer period on tonight's agenda. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comment will be called first. If you are joining virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you are joining by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room, there's no one in the room, so I won't worry about that for right now. I'm going to wait to see if anybody who has joined virtually has indicated a desire to speak. Anybody with us tonight?
Chair Ray, we have no virtual attendees at this time.
Okay, then I'm gonna skip over the guidelines. If someone joins us later and wants to make comment, we can do that then, and I can cover the guidelines at that time. All right, moving on, we have a full agenda today. We have four things. So we've got agenda item ID 1293, which is the Light Rail Plan and Visioning Public Plan and Visioning Public Participation Plan. We also have three items related to the Comprehensive Plan, and they are ID 1490, ID 1565, and ID 1564, and ID 1565. And we'll be doing all those together. So with that, let's go to the agenda. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I understand maybe we've made some modifications to the agenda, or the minutes?
Yes, Chair Ray, some errata were corrected.
Okay. Given the corrected minutes, any objection to approving the minutes? All right, the minutes are approved. Okay, well, we're going to get into the agenda then, and the first thing on our list today is ID 1293, the Light Rail Plan and Visioning Public Participation Plan. And Thomas Valdez is presenting Senior Transportation Planner. And Thomas, I guess we have you all night tonight, don't we?
You really do.
Okay, all right, well, take it away.
Great, thanks, Chair Ray. I'm actually going to have Lacy Bell, who's an associate, sorry, a principal at Nelson-Nigard Associates, join me for this first presentation, but I will sort of lead off the discussion here. One second. Green. So again, my name is Thomas Valdrez. I'm the Senior Transportation Planner at Issaquah, and I'm joined by Lacy Bell at Nelson-Nigard Associates. And the purpose of this discussion is to get your feedback on two documents. The first document is the Draft Link Light Rail Plan, and the second one is the Public Participation Strategy for Light Rail Visioning Development. We'll be asking for your feedback towards the end of this presentation, but feedback is twofold. So the first part, we'll be asking for feedback on the Light Rail Plan. Questions we have for you are, does this plan adequately provide the city with a playbook to guide planning efforts? Are there any additional topics that the plan should consider? I will then dive into the Public Participation Plan, where we're going to ask you for two questions. Does the proposed approach meet its public participation goals? And are there any additional community interests or audiences that are missing from our potential audiences and stakeholders list? So just to provide a little bit of feedback, we've been planning for growth in the city for decades. In 2012, the city had adopted the Central Issaquah Plan, and this is really to guide the long-term vision of Central Issaquah, just to make sure that it's a more livable, sustainable, and balanced mixed-use area. In 2015, the City and Puget Sound Regional Council designated a portion of the Central Issaquah area. This is the urban core area, shown here in green. So this was designated as a regional growth center whereby 68% of the city's household growth and 64% of employment growth between now and 2050 is expected to be in this area. And just to provide a little bit more background, in 2016, voters approved ST 3, so Sound Transit 3. This was a ballot measure initiative aimed at funding and developing the expansion of mass transit in the region. This includes the South Kirkland-Issaquah, or like we call, we like to call it Ski, Ski Link. So this is the Ski Link Extension Project. This project is currently being managed to a 2041 completion year. It also includes one light rail station in Central Issaquah. So in short, Central Issaquah's planned growth and focus on high-density, mixed-use, and pedestrian-friendly development is going to be generating the transit potential, the transit rider potential that will warrant Sound Transit's investment in their Central Issaquah Station. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Lacy from Nelson-Nigard Associates, and she will walk you through the plan that Nelson-Nigard has developed.
Thanks, Thomas. So as Thomas mentioned, I'm Lacy Bell with Nelson-Nigard. Previously, prior to being a consultant, I did work at transit agencies on capital projects, so have some experience with this. I'm going to go back to the map for just a second, and one thing I want to point out, well, a couple of things. First, I want to commend Issaquah for thinking about this as early as you are. That's great that you're thinking about this now. And also, you have the benefit of learning from the rest of the region and how they've worked with Sound Transit. So really great that you're able to start early and take lessons learned. But one thing I do want to point out, right, is the Ski Link, there's very wide station spacing, and so looking to understand how you can generate as much ridership potential from each of those stations is going to be important, and really thinking through, since there's just the one station planned for Central Issaquah, visioning early what you want that station to be to really generate the ridership. And so in the plan, we outline kind of station prerequisites for success with that framework in mind, that this is the central, this is the station from Issaquah, and you want to generate as much ridership as you can from there. So thinking through how you're going to do that with land use, with connecting transit, with bike-ped connections, right? And so those are some of the things that we've outlined in the plan. And then we go into the more tangible, like, developing a timeline for when you want to do each of the items, aligned with strategic considerations, conceptual locations, and thinking, providing a proactive plan for how you'll prepare for working with Sound Transit. So again, this just goes back to where I started, right, that really, how can you get the most ridership potential out of that one station? And we call these the sixties of transit-supportive land uses in planning. I'm not sure some of you have heard of the sixties before, but really thinking through, first, they're kind of in order of most permanent to least permanent, and the most important is really what destinations are you serving? So thinking about what the destinations are, where do you have large employment, where do you have large population centers in Central Issaquah, and starting there, are there other destinations you want to serve with transit? We included in the plan that Issaquah is known as somewhere to come and do outdoor recreation, and do you want to tie to those outdoor, it doesn't always generate a ton of ridership, right? More like employment and housing are bigger generators, but thinking through what destinations you're trying to serve within walking distance of the station, developing the public infrastructure at a human scale so people can feel like they can access the station by walking or rolling, and then making sure that you have enough mix of land uses so people, it's thought of as a destination in and of itself. People ideally aren't just coming to that Central Issaquah Station to go to Bellevue or onto Seattle, but really thinking of how can you create that, really a dense hub where people want to come and then connect to the region? And so a big question related to that, right, is how much do you focus on serving Issaquah versus the region? And those are some of the considerations that we've outlined in the plan that you'll get to work through, and that's one of the earliest action items. And so this timeline really is breaking things out by the Sound Transit project process, and we've tried to outline what the most important priorities are for Issaquah during each of these timeframes. And so there's the potential that this timeline could shift, right? So it's saying that Sound Transit's now focused on a 2041 opening, some conversations they've had with their realignment, if that's achievable. And so even if this shifts, we've tried to outline kind of the key timeframes as opposed to the years. We did put years to it because that's kind of what they're tracking to. We did meet with Sound Transit staff, and these are the dates they provided. So some of the key action items and really getting a vision for what the city wants that station area to be is really the most critical first step in that 2024 to 2026 time horizon before Sound Transit kicks off their official planning process. And then that early planning stage is one of the most important times for Issaquah staff to be involved with the Sound Transit process because that's when they set a lot of the key decisions. And then through the environmental and preliminary design process, it's still important to be engaged, but really, if you're just making decisions about what you want the station area to look like at that point, or where you want the station sited, it's a little bit too late because those decisions are made in the earlier planning process. So that's a key, key piece. And then always, the Issaquah will have a role in final design as approver of the plans, right? So signing off, going through the official Issaquah development process, and making sure that you're signing permits and giving, helping Sound Transit move through that process. But really, thinking through the early planning stuff is where the city's vision should be focused on. And during that early planning process, the key considerations we've outlined are, again, thinking through what, what is the character that you want for that Central Issaquah Station, given that it is planned to be the end of the line? It could be a great location for people from further east to come and get on the system and connect, or it could be somewhere where you know that may happen, but you could focus more on serving locals right at the station area. There are a number of policy tools that Issaquah can think through to support those, that vision that you have. We did some peer interviews, talked to Federal Way and Bellevue to learn what they did, and they set some planning guidelines about defining station areas that are supported, that support a transit station. And so I think, thinking through if that's something the city wants to do or not. And then always thinking through how you'll integrate with the metro network, including microtransit, which I'm sure will continue to grow. The first step is some...
Lacy, a quick question?
Yeah, this was a question I was thinking about asking later, but maybe it's more appropriate now. So when we say we're planning for end of the line in 2041, should we, as a city, also be thinking, and I say this a little tongue-in-cheek, but should we be thinking of 2090 when maybe they're going to want to extend it to North Bend, or, and should that play any role in our consideration? And I'm thinking particularly that we wouldn't want to place it in a place that would make it really difficult to extend it further out east whenever that is happening, but we know that growth is going eastward, right? So anyway, a little bit of a tongue-in-cheek question, but is there any part of that really, really long range that we should be taking into consideration when we're doing our planning?
I think that's a great question, and one of the first things we've outlined is actually some, well, the first step is to think through where those conceptual station locations are, right? And I think there are different locations that you can think through, and some may be a longer deviation from I-90 that would require additional track to get to and be a little bit more complicated, but be closer to more development. But to your point, that could mean that it's more difficult to extend to the future, into the future, whether that's out to Bend, or whether that is just an extension potentially to the Highlands in the future, right? And so I think that is definitely a consideration that you all should think through when you present these different conceptual locations to the public as well. And so some of the station locations are, of course, the representative station, and that's where Sound Transit will start their process, what was defined in that representative project that was in the voter package, and that includes a station very, very close to I-90. Or if the city wants to think about other station locations within Central Issaquah, what do you do with that existing Issaquah Transit Center where there's already a parking structure? The representative project includes additional parking. How much parking does the city think is important to serve high-capacity transit, right? Those are the conversations you can think through while you evaluate these different locations. Or are there high-density housing or employment locations that would be a better location for the station? And so what the plan outlines is different steps to think through, looking at station siting and alignment planning, end of line, again, whether it's, or if you want to think of it as the interim end of line, or end of line for a certain period, but you know that the city would like to extend service in the future. Really thinking through partnerships, not just partnerships with Sound Transit, but also partnerships with developers and businesses. And it's, one of the things that I always say in this, being on the agency side for a long time, is that the time horizon for these projects, right? The fact that we're talking about this with a 2041 delivery date is different than the time horizon that developers use, right? And so trying to get meaningful engagement from developers can be a challenge, but it can be very valuable as you're thinking about what the future potential is. And then the other piece that a lot of municipalities think through with investment coming from a regional entity is, are there other local projects that could benefit by being done at the same time? Sometimes Sound Transit will refer to those as betterments, but opportunities to leverage, and I know that you all are talking about the I-90 crossing and how that would be future-compatible for a future station, or are there elements of that project that could be combined with the bigger capital project? And then, again, I said, like I've mentioned, an important consideration is really those bus service connections to the station, and is it continuing to be some of these regional buses, or is it more local service? Is it a shift to microtransit? And just, I know Thomas and his team will continue to engage with metro and see how Issaquah, how it continues to be served during that time. But things like electric bus charging are those things that will need to be incorporated into the station. And then again, really important, thinking through land use and policies that Issaquah can set to encourage the type of land use and development that you'd like around the Very high-level overview, and again, what the plan tries to outline is, what are key milestones during each of, each of those Sound Transit planning phases? And you've got some work to do to come up with a vision, and you've got time before Sound Transit starts the process. It's kind of the high level where I'd leave it. Thomas is going to talk about the public process.
Want to do questions kind of at this section, or you want to wait until the end of the whole thing? Because we're kind of changing gears here, it feels like. Okay.
So I know we're going to comment later. This is, you did a fantastic job on this plan, but I do have a question. Are there political strategies that we should be considering as well? And I'm thinking about the fact that we had a mayor who sat on Sound Transit Board for many years, but also bringing our state legislators on board, and, you know, all of those, just placing our people in the right places, and also having the right people supporting, and particularly when it comes to the timing, because we don't want Sound Transit to keep pushing us back and back and back. So I'm just wondering, is, should there be a parallel plan going in terms of what's the political strategy that we're also going to pursue to make sure that this stays on, on the right timeline? And maybe that is a question for our deputy city administrator.
I was going to say, that's an Andrew question.
Sure. Hi, I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. And short answer, yes, we are considering what is the political strategy we want to pursue, and given the timeline that was just presented, what are those important points in time that we need to bear influence on the process? And so that is something that we are continuing to discuss. We do anticipate pursuing a number of strategies in the future, and we can talk about that at a, at a different meeting if you like.
Thank you, and that was the only question I had.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you very much. I've got two questions based on your experience in terms of lessons learned elsewhere. So earlier in the presentation, you talked kind of about how there are two different approaches for station siting, one serving more of the regional focus, people who are going to come in and use that to connect to wherever they're going, and employment hubs, and then also serving, the other option being more of a focus on serving your local community, dense housing, dense services, that kind of stuff. When localities have chose, have chosen to serve their local community over those who are kind of coming in, are there any unintended consequences that, that, that we should be mindful of? Are there any lessons learned there? For example, when you do that, maybe you don't account for maybe what the appropriate parking or whatever might be, or, or connected bus service might be, and so then your system gets overloaded? Any comments you have on that would be great.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And given Issaquah's location on the map, I think there's no way that your station will not function with a combination of both. And so one of the, right, I think, thinking about the primary user in the initial design, right? You could say, we want to make this super easy for people coming from I-90, that it's direct into the parking garage, ramp from I-90, right? I think the Linwood Transit Center had a ramp straight in, and it's going straight to the garage, right? Or, and then on the other side of their station, they've got, they've really focused on development. So I think the Linwood Transit Center redevelopment that's coming with the new station there would be a great place to look. I think they've done a good job balancing it. And so I think those are some of the things that you'll need to think through. But yeah, if you decide that you wanted the station to be further away from I-90, and so you're then, how you would have strategies in place so you don't still have a ton of people driving from I-90 and congesting the local network? So I think those are things you can think through about whether or not some of the stations down the line would be a better place to attract the East Gate, right? If that would be where you'd want people to drive to. And so you could have policies in place that make it difficult to park at the Issaquah Center, right? And so just, or working to always advertise that that's where you want to go if you're coming from I-90, because it's faster access, even though it's a little bit of a longer drive. But if I-90 is backed up, people would know they could come to Issaquah, right? So don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole, but those are things to think about. But yeah, the Linwood Station is a great example.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Sounds like maybe we need a council and staff field trip to the Linwood Center just to take a peek at it. That sounds interesting. My second question was just, I, I really enjoyed the exploration of kind of end-of-line policy considerations in the plan. Is there anything else in terms of issues for other end-of-line stations that we should be mindful of? Public safety, fair enforcement, coordination, human services, navigation? Are there any other kinds of issues we should be mindful of when we make this decision, or knowing that we're going to be an end-of-line, temporary end-of-line, that we should start to think about our long-term policies in these other spaces to meet any emerging needs that you've noticed at other end-of-lines?
I have an operations background, so I tend to start with those issues. Things that have come up is capacity at the end of, and making sure if it's, you've got enough bus connection space, so making sure it's designed in a way that there are, because this is where buses will want to come and connect to the light rail and layover, and so sometimes that footprint is bigger than you might think. The other piece that is always complicated, but just the public realm and thinking through public restrooms, and if this is the end of the line in a big transfer station, should there be a restroom? And that is always a complicated issue because of the number of safety concerns that come along with that. Those are my two off the top of my head.
Couple, a couple of additional things. I appreciate the description of what Linwood did. I was going to actually ask you kind of what other end-of-the-liners have been doing, just so we had some examples. So are there other ones, or is Linwood probably the most interesting one?
They're interesting because they will definitely be that interim, right? Because that's where the Linwood link extension before Everett link extension. So they have thought through, like, how are they going to shift when the extension happens? Engle Lake is a good, has been serving as the end of the line for a long time, and there hasn't been a lot of development beyond the parking structure there, but does serve as a hub near the airport. But Redmond is an interesting one on the downtown Redmond extension. They have, they had the luxury of two stations being part of their plan. And so one of their stations is not the, their end of the line is their downtown station without parking, and so they facilitated the parking function at a different station further.
And then what about economic development? I think that if you draw any large group of people to any single spot, there's an opportunity. What have you seen cities do not to kind of drive additional economic activity around the centers?
So that's again where I would, to the extent feasible, engage with the local development community and see what they'd be interested in. And then Sound Transit does have a joint development policy, and they, their surplus policy goes to equitable TOD housing. And so just staying engaged in the regional conversations about TOD, transit-oriented development, and where the trends are going. But yeah, looking for how you can engage with the developers early is important. Anything you'd add?
I think you may have just answered the last question, which is around what are the communities doing to afford, promote transit-oriented development, for sure, but also then affordable transit-oriented development? Because I can see having bundles of transit-oriented development that are all market rate and exacerbate our current problem. Any, any thoughts on that one?
That is exactly why Sound Transit developed their policy, that they would at least commit to doing affordable housing on the properties that they own. So a lot of times, what happens when they build these big projects is they have to acquire more property than they need for staging or whatnot, and so they do end up with property adjacent to the light rail. And so they've committed to ensuring that any development that goes there is affordable. And so just making sure that, again, you've got policies in place that require a certain amount.
And the last one, I think this is more of a Sound Transit question than an Issaquah question, but once we know where we're going to decide it, I think that land becomes clearly more valuable, and how do we deal with the anticipated increase in property values associated with bringing in transit like that?
And Federal Way is a good jurisdiction to talk to. They acquired some property early that then was city property that...
Interesting. I, I think this is a fascinating discussion, and I think the planning horizon makes it even that much more fascinating. makes it even that much more fascinating, and how we try to project what, and this is probably more comments than questions, but I'm the chair, so. But anyway, I think it'll be really interesting to see how that all pans out. So, all right, any other questions on this? Yeah, Deputy Council President?
Can I ask you a really dumb question, just on my part? Where are Sound Transit, where are light rail cars stored? Or like, where's the maintenance of those vehicles? Do we accept any responsibility for like tracks for where they'll like sit when they're not being used or anything?
They might be thrilled if you proposed something like that. So the Ski Link will is planned to be serviced out of the east operations and maintenance facility that recently opened to serve east link. So it is in Bellevue, right, just south of 520, over by the new development, blanking on the name.
Okay, but somewhere in there. Did you have a comment, Deputy City Administrator?
Sure. It's my understanding that that was part of the discussion when the S23 package was put together, is given that Issaquah is going to be an end-of-the-line station, do we have space for a rail yard of sorts to store some cars, et cetera? There is another location that would be the main yard that would service, but I think we, as we get closer, we'll have to really understand what some of the operational needs are from Sound Transit for an end-of-the-line station.
Yeah, and then making sure we have that grow and con discussion there, and if that's something Issaquah would even consider entertaining, what, maybe we get pushed up 20? All right, thank you.
Good question.
I think, anything else on this segment, or we should move on? Thomas?
Thanks so much, Lacey. I really appreciate it. Moving on to the light rail visioning exercise. So again, as Lacey had mentioned, one of the first things that was identified through the light rail plan is to, is the need to co-develop a vision for the station area. And to do that with the community, to make sure that we're proposing an option that is community-preferred, that's aligned with community values. And so sort of the flow chart of what we're proposing here is to co-create a vision and guiding principles for the station area. This would then be fed into the city, looking at a preferred station location, aligning it with community values and the vision that's been established. And then proposing that to Sound Transit as part of their planning phase, understanding that it's a Sound Transit project, but we can do what we can to try to influence where the one station will go. We can also use some land use policies and make other policy changes to make it a more transit-supportive area. So just doing what we can to sort of influence where the potential station could go, and again, aligning it to how the community would like to see it. So the goals of the public participation plan are to engage diverse voices, provide accurate information to the community, and to provide a variety of public participation opportunities. And so some of the potential audiences and stakeholders that we've identified through this process include the business and development communities, the general community at large, human services interests, mobility advocacy, and current transit riders, as well as seniors and youth. The proposed approach is really to kind of mirror what we've done with the transit study. So using the transit study website as a landing page for information. Moving from there, we're proposing developing a multilingual community survey. So just like the transit study, developing the survey in English, Spanish, and Mandarin. And then the questions would be aimed at developing that vision and guiding principles. We also acknowledge that some folks don't have the opportunity to attend meetings, so we would like to go to them, doing some pop-up events like we've done with the transit study. One example is I attended a Kiwanis meeting and got some really good feedback, so I would like to do that again as part of this process. Great. Okay. And then, yeah, just getting informal feedback where people are currently meeting, so that it's mutually beneficial. And we would also like to do, and we're proposing to do some community focus groups. I'll talk about that in a moment. And then all of this would be fed through city boards and commissions. So just a little bit more detail on the focus groups. Groups would be about eight to 10 members, so that it's a really intimate group. They would be co-facilitated by city staff. They would be comprised of members with diverse perspectives and guided through a discussion tailored to each group. And so these groups mirror the same as the potential audiences and stakeholders groups. We have the business community as one, development community and large landowners, human services, mobility advocacy, and current transit riders, and seniors and youth. So we acknowledge that, you know, people are, people represent different groups in each, so a senior could also be a current transit rider. So we want to make sure that we're not looking too narrowly at this, but again, just trying to get some diverse voices that could represent these high-level interests that would be potentially the same or divergent, depending on people's perspectives. So trying to get all the information out there, all the voices, so that we can then create a draft version of a vision and set of guiding principles that we would take to Equity Board, the Economic Vitality Commission, the Human Services Commission, following that through the TAB, and then finally through the Committee of the Whole. So again, everything sort of snowballs into each other, so we're hoping to do a survey and pop-up events. This will then inform the focus group discussions, making sure that those are pointed and focused on the specific interests of that group, and then boards and commissions, and then committee of the whole. And this is the proposed schedule, so we are now in winter, which is amazing. We will then have about a year-long process, starting with developing materials and then ending at a final summary engagement report. So we're hoping to just report out on what we've done, and just really show how it's reflective, how the vision and guiding principles have been reflective of everything that we've heard to date. So we did take this to the TAB. They provided some feedback. We've updated the participation plan accordingly. There was one piece of feedback that we, the administration, did not choose to incorporate, and that was the desire to hire consultants to facilitate the focus groups. The administration has experience with focus groups, and we don't feel that hiring consultants would be necessary at this time. So again, just wrapping up this presentation, we have two different plans that we've discussed, and we're hoping to get council's feedback.
Right. Any questions on the light rail visioning public participation plan? Deputy Council President?
Yeah, I have a handful. Thank you. Although, on the whole, fantastic job. Three questions on focus groups, although maybe I'll start, is it possible to carve out, maybe, it seems like this lines up, the multilingual survey might line up with when we do our actual community survey for the city, although maybe we do that the year after next year. Okay, never mind. I was going to ask if maybe we could tack on a few questions about this, so just forget that feedback. Around focus groups, first one is who would assemble these focus groups? Is this a mayor-appointed thing, or would we, would we have staff? I'd understand, are they applying? Are we reaching out to communities? Can you walk us through that?
Yeah, sure thing. At this point, we're kind of interested in the administration working, like, working with long-range transportation staff, and like, the executive department would sort of help with that. We also acknowledge that certain groups, we would probably want to recruit from outreach events. So like, for example, if there's a human services group, and there's a couple members that we've been talking to, like we have through the transit study, or, you know, just like through this process, if there's a couple that are providing a lot of good feedback and are really engaged, we might want to pick them out for the focus group. So I think it'll be sort of a combination of ways, just acknowledging that, like, people are participating in various ways. So hopefully that sort of answers your question.
No, it does. Thank you. So a variety of different. Also, when we actually sit down with focus groups, are we thinking, you have those different kind of actual communities that we're pulling from. Would the groups be a mixture of these groups, or would the focus groups be kind of distinct identities? I see benefits to both.
Yeah, for this, for this plan, they would be distinctive identities so that we could focus on, you know, I think the meetings are planned to be like two hours long, so there'll be, you know, time to introduce general topics that will be consistent for all groups. But we do want to focus on the specific topics that, say, a business owner would be interested in, and then really dig into that, or like, a current transit rider, we'd want to dig into that a lot. And so using that time, and really just opening the floor to like discussion, so that everybody can really talk it out. It may be that there's no correct answer, but we just like, we want to hear all perspectives. We want to record that, and then make sure that we're thinking about that when we're deciding, like, what to do next.
Okay, that's helpful. So it's not a standard list of questions that we're asking all the groups? They're targeted very specifically for them? Okay. You know why, what was it, the board, was it Transportation Advisory Board wanted consultants for the focus groups? Do you know why? The rationale was?
Yeah. The rationale was, there was somebody on the board that used to do focus groups, so they were a practitioner. And so I think, I acknowledge that as a practitioner, you're probably like, you know, that's what you're doing all the time, I'm sure you're better than I would be, or like anybody else who doesn't do that all the time. But the administration does have experience doing it, and we feel like we have it covered.
Okay. Thank you. Can we, can you talk to me a little bit about what, how we're thinking about in defining internally co-creation? Because it's definitely a buzzword and very big right now in the public administration, local government space. And it's great, but it can sometimes be kind of performative. And a lot of times when we talk about co-creation, it doesn't mean our traditional collective input from the community, these ones we agree with, these ones we have justifications for why we don't agree with, and we move forward. Co-creation is very specifically a, we come to agreement together, and we do this physically together, sometimes, and most time in the same room and stuff like that. So how are we thinking about kind of co-creating a vision at the moment?
Yeah, the co-creation process, we're really hoping to start at the focus group level. So hoping to build in some time to really focus on, towards the end of the meeting, like, summarizing what we've all said and agreeing on that. There will be oftentimes where discussions are had, but maybe we, towards the end of the meeting, we decide as a group, maybe that's not the best approach for this particular topic. So I guess, starting at the focus group level, summarizing as a group, and then making sure that we're crystal clear on what we've discussed that day. And then, again, snowballing that to the boards and commissions. Boards and commissions are often, come into alignment on certain topics, sometimes they don't. But at least we're being transparent about what's been said. So I think that sort of gets at what you're, what you're asking. Ultimately, in the process, things will be fed through the TAB, and we're hoping to really cross-pollinate ideas on everything that's been shared, both forward and backward. So the TAB is interested in also communicating with the environmental board, the EVC, and the human services committee. So hoping to exchange ideas there, and like, potentially do like shared meetings with boards and commissions.
Remember, DeMichele? Questions? Okay, then wait your turn. Just quickly, on the comments, or question, I like the affinity groups by and large, but there were three of them that I, I went to that you don't have. One is a neighborhood focus, one is a people who work here but don't live here focus, and one is a surrounding communities focus. And wondering why, if there was a reason you had excluded those from kind of co-creation?
I mean, great point. I wouldn't say that I excluded them, but I do, I do appreciate that, and we can certainly incorporate that.
That made my question sound a lot more like a comment, didn't it? All right, then we're going to move on from questions and into comments. Don't want to be too far out of order. Barb, you want to go first?
Do we, do we have anybody online for public comment, or? Thanks for asking. We do not have any virtual attendees.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. Then I can go ahead. Right. So first of all...
And do, and do both. Both, both plans. Comment on both plans.
Comment on...
Both the...
Oh, yes, I will.
Okay.
Yeah. The first one is, does the plan adequately provide the city with a playbook to guide planning efforts really effectively? It was, it was great reading the plan. And what I really liked about it was the framing of all of the myriad policy and visioning decisions we're going to have to make over the next few years. But I thought those were laid out very, very well, and really good examples of how other communities have handled things and why you're recommending it. So I thought the, the plan itself is, is really wonderful. So thank you for all the work on that. And I didn't see any additional topics because if we do everything that you've got in that plan, we will, we'll have done a lot of work. So I didn't have any suggestions for additional topics. On the public participation plan, I did have, you said, are there any additional community interests or audience? And like, Councilmember Ray, I have a few. You know, I'm just going to pitch, and I know that we have a time limited and a staff limited, we have to make some decisions. But when we're reaching out to the business community, I'd like to make sure that we not only talk to business owners, but we talk to workers. And, and how, how you do that, I'm not exactly sure, but whether there are unions that you would want to talk to, that would be one approach. Or if you find friendly employers who are willing to nominate, you know, workers in their companies. But I think that the owners have one perspective, and I think the, the workers have a very different perspective. And they are often the people who most need the transit. And so I would just urge you to do that. And similarly with human services. Our human services people are absolutely wonderful. They have great big picture, and many of them have themselves lived experience. But it would be really good if we could figure out how to talk to people who are currently needing human services, or who have the buzzword now is lived experience with human services right, directly right now. So same thing. Talk to the people who are in charge and who have that big picture, but let's also get down to the people who, who potentially are the ones who really, really need the transit services. In terms of minority populations, and I read through that whole long list of organizations, wow. There is a new group called the Circle that's being developed. I believe even one of our city employees is a consultant to that. It's serving mostly the Hispanic and Latinx population in Issaquah. So I think that would be a really good direct access to that population. And then let's not forget our LGBTQ population as a minority group who often have concerns about safety in public transit. So Eastside Pride and East of the, or Pride, Pride, East of the Bridge is, I think those are very similar organizations. So Eastside Pride and East of the, or Pride, Pride, East of the Bridge is, I think those are very similar organizations. And then P Flag, of course, would be another source of access to that group. And then finally, let's make sure that there's geographic equity in the representation. So some of the communities that are further away from central, like the South Lake Union population, the Sycamore population, some of those neighborhoods that really aren't on the main thoroughfares. Be sure that, you know, that somehow or another that they get included. And then last comment. I really like the idea of starting out with focus groups and the targeted questions. But I would urge you to at least consider, when you get all done with all those focus groups, invite the people that participated in the focus groups to a community meeting. And make sure that they don't all sit together, but that they sit at tables, talking to other people with other perspectives so that there could be this interchange of perspectives. I just think that you can call it a culminating event at the end of the focus group process. But just having the community hear that there are all kinds of different uses for transit and all kinds of different people that need that would be, I think, an important. And also maybe come to a clearer consensus about what the community wants after they've been able to talk to each other. So just a suggestion that maybe that would be something to add to the community engagement. So, but I did appreciate the long, 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 long list of groups that you're going to try and reach out to. So anyway, excellent job. A plus. Great. Thank you.
That'd be Council President Hall. Comments?
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I didn't hear anything I disagree with, but I just wanted all that. Starting with the light rail plan, looks excellent to me. I'm very happy. It's very proactive. Appreciate seeing also what transit supportive communities look like and what they feel like. I think that's a really important thing to put up top. Also, the policy considerations for the end of line stationing, like we talked about earlier. There's still quite a lot of discussion to happen there. I agree. Lots of work there to go. So hopefully we can capture some of the other themes that emerged around that conversation during questions to put in the minutes for the other council members. Definitely a comprehensive view of kind of what the next steps are, what, what we should be doing when. And what should we, what should we be focused on and when? So I appreciate that. Knowing that Linwood and, and Angler Lake are good examples to look to is great. I love what Councilmember De Michelle said earlier in part of her questions about how should we be thinking about this eventually not being an end of line station too. So I want to make sure that we capture that feedback just for council to also be mindful of in the minutes or, or just as this moves along through different boards and commissions and back to council. Yeah, again, light rail plan looks great. Public participation plan, I think, pulls a lot of that great information together too. I think the goals meet my expectation. I love seeing the focus group focus there. So I appreciate that. Again, I, I think co-creation is wonderful. I just think we need to be specific about what we mean by that and whether that's actually in the plan or more just something that we're mindful of moving forward and knowing that we might need to adapt is fine by me as long as we're intentional about it. That's a very, sometimes we have loaded terms. We just need to be very intentional about that. And other than that, well done. Tons of work has already gone into this and we're not even into the, the real meat of actually getting the station in light rail. So appreciate all your work.
Did you do your comments on the stakeholder plan too? Good. Well, I'll, I'll bring it home for you. I have one, only one kind of comment, maybe two, on the, the plan itself, the kind of getting us prepared. One is, and probably the biggest one is, the world changes a lot. This is a dynamic area. And so we ought to build in a plan as a kind of a review, probably on a biannual basis, to come back and say, look, is this still holding true? And I have every belief that Sound Transit will be here in 2041. But in the event that they don't, we should be kind of proactively kind of adjusting to that. And part of it is, spent some time in our nation's capital and they put in their transit rail system in 1978, probably with our money, though it was Atlanta. And the plan was to extend out to Dulles, to the airport, after they put in the initial one in 1978. That was 45 years ago and it's still not there. So it can happen. And so I just want us to be cautious and, you know, keep managing that expectation. As much as I like to think we're not going to be the end of the line, I think we're going to be the end of the line. So I, I don't share your optimism, but that's, that's fine. The second thing, and I think the more important thing deals really with the outreach plan. And that is, this is a big deal and this is a, a big investment that we as a community are going to make. And I don't want to do the community engagement, anything other than first rate because we really need to have good, good information to make this big decision that we have to make. And I want to hear some new voices because often when we do this, we hear the same people in the, I love them to death, but the Human Services Committee Commission and the, and the TAB and, you know, as we go down the list. And so those are important voices, but I want to hear some new voices. And so I would suggest, and you kind of tiptoed through it, which is including the survey in the community survey. I would really like us to consider doing a statistically valid survey. I know it's expensive for this survey because I want to make sure that we really are getting a true representation of what people are thinking in the community, not those, those frequent voices that we hear a lot. Because I don't know that they're really truly representative. So let's make sure that we, we don't do this on the cheap. Let's make sure that we listen to the people of Isquah first and foremost, because they're ours. I'd love to see a neighborhood focus. I, you know, we, we did that with the council listening sessions. I thought was super important and, you know, I think Barb, you mentioned, you know, the Sycamore neighborhood that gets a little bit overlooked or Montrose that gets always overlooked. And we, you know, we need to get their voices. And then surrounding communities, certainly the easy three are Smamish, North Bend, Farmy. And then this group of unincorporated King County that, you know, have our, our same name would also be really good. And then, I don't know, maybe Renton, Covington, Maple Valley also, you know, because there's, there's possibilities there. So that, that's my only thoughts on this. And I, and I'm not a professional facilitator, but I have worked with them. And I, I go back to when we did the strategic planning and we had, I forgot the name of the firm now, did that. And they facilitated a number of sessions. I thought it was really good to have someone outside. It brings a, a skill level and B, a certain level of detachment, which I think can be helpful. So understand, not wanting to do it, but give it another look. That's all I got. You guys got anything else?
Yeah, I had thought about the population south of Issaquah. We have a lot of low income people who live along the Isquah Hobart Road and are very much in need of transit and I think probably come to the Transit Center and take the bus from there. So if we could get their voices into the mix, I think that would be good. The Circle might be a way to reach that population. And the other one would be through the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. They serve a lot of people from south of Issaquah at the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. They might be able to arrange a focus group there. I think they could probably easily arrange a focus group there. So and a lot of those folks are also Spanish speaking, English is not their first language. And so I think that would be an important, important group to include in the focus groups that we're planning. So I agree with you, Chris, that, that, that is an area that we serve. They're not exactly our, our residents, but we serve them.
Yeah, I, I think for us to be successful, that driving ridership is going to be key. And that, but that's what, what it kind of made me think of though, you know, we have to look at the broader spectrum. And I, I didn't mention worker, but you did. So leave it at that. Thomas, did you get what you needed?
I did. Thanks very much.
Yeah. Lacy, thanks for joining us. Great presentation. Have a great evening. Guys want to keep rolling or you want to take a minute or two? Okay, yeah, we're, we'll, we'll just take a, give you a chance to catch your breath. We'll just take a five minute recess.
And we'll be walking through each of the elements to get your feedback and then we'll pause at the end of each. But again, we're not going to ask for your feedback until the end of all three. And these questions are pretty similar for each element. So this may look redundant. First question is the same for all three. Are there any additional considerations that the Planning Policy Commission should study prior to finalizing their recommendations to City Council? Are there proposed change, sorry, do the proposed changes fully meet the expectations of the Transportation Element update? And are there any other topics that the administration should consider when making edits to the draft? So the mobility, which we also call transportation, capital facilities and utilities elements are all required per the GMA. For this update, there's a new element called the environment element. And this is receiving many of the greenhouse gas emission reduction policies that were currently in the transportation element. The primary goal of the Transportation Element update is to attempt to better coordinate with functional plans that we currently have. So we have the Mobility Master Plan, which we will update as part of this process in 2024. But it was last updated in 2020 and this currently administers the Transportation Element. We also have the Street Standards Update, which we updated last year. This currently, you know, guides how we build roads throughout the city, both the construction and design. Last year, you'll remember, we updated the land use code. There was some transportation topics that we went into much detail about. So we're hoping to reflect some of those conversations through the comp plan. This year, we also worked on the ADA Transition Plan. So this is improving accessibility for folks with mobility challenges and generally reducing barriers to mobility. Also, in development, we have the Transit Study. Many of those discussions that we had tonight and then just general discussions on how to improve transit service throughout the community, those are also reflected in the Transportation Element update. This slide just really just shows how the comp plan feeds into functional plans. Transportation Element is an example of a comp plan element and then how it feeds into the functional plans that really carry out the vision, goals and policies. That then leads to how we pay for things. So the financing and implementation. And then finally, we track performance annually on how we're doing. So going back to the Transportation Element, we currently have it organized as such. So we have proactive safety, climate and quality of life, multimodal balance system. We talk about walking, biking, taking transit, driving, and then also we have an implementation section. We took this document to the Transportation Advisory Board and then we took it to the Planning Policy Commission. We got their feedback. That feedback is reflected in the staff report as well as the attachments. And the administration is proposing changes to be better in compliance with HB 1181, which has updated how we plan for climate change. We also want to reflect our community's desire to be more climate resilient and be able to adapt to natural disasters. Greenhouse gas emissions is a big topic. We're really interested in reducing those. So that's reflective in this element. There's been discussions on how to improve multimodal transportation options throughout the community. So we've tried to address that here as well. And again, the, the Transit Study has really brought up a lot of ideas on how to better support transit through policy. So that's in here as well. Through Title 18, through the land use code update, we talked a lot about right sizing parking. And curb space management is another parking related topic that will be very important to discuss, especially as we consider how Central Issaquah will develop in the next 20 years. And then also we want to be just generally consistent with the other elements. So we're hoping to make some changes in that realm too. So just walking through the changes here, we made several minor updates. We also want to be aligned with state and county requirements. So within the climate and quality of life section, that's what we've done here. For multimodal balance system, as well as walking and biking, we have new changes to incorporate feedback that we received. So one of the things we heard was the desire to pursue micro mobility options. So that, that is reflective of the policy here. We also have some minor updates to existing policies as well as an update that was a recommendation from the Transit Study. For the transit section, we have some minor changes as well as some, some desires to be consistent with state requirements. And then for auto travel and implementation, again, some, some adjustments to be alignment with Title 18. A new policy related to curb space management, which came about through the Title 18 process. Title 18 process. And as was pointed out by the Planning Policy Commission, that we were lacking an implementation goal, which isn't to say that we don't track how we're doing, but it just wasn't reflected in this document, so hoping to add that to add consistency. I think I'll pause here and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at this point?
Let's see. I sent Thomas a question earlier today, just, and there's many responses to this, so, but I was asking, do we have a statement in the comprehensive plan related to transit integration with affordable housing or multifamily housing development? And I sent, you know, I worded very loosely, a way that maybe that could be stated, but and it got a response back that in the housing element, we do, in fact, have a statement that affordable housing and multifamily housing should be located near transit. I'm just wondering if in the comprehensive plan, we want to do a companion statement to that emphasizing the transportation part of it, that, and I became aware of this because I do represent the city at the Eastside Transportation Partnership, and this was brought up as an issue with the emphasis in Washington State now on affordable housing and making sure that we have the infrastructure to serve all that affordable housing. Councilmember Powell from Semamish was making the point, and actually, that was adopted as part of the Eastside Transportation Partnership legislative priorities. They adopted a much stronger support for the idea of integrating transit into the affordable housing element. So anyway, I'm bringing it up as a possibility. I know this has already been through a couple of boards and commissions, and that it's very hard to add something at this late date, but I just want to bring it up for discussion purposes. Thank you.
Can I comment on your comment? It was a great question. So this, but I have a kind of a follow-on question, and this is more about the comprehensive plan in total. Do we want to have things, similar concepts in play in more than one place, just because of maintaining synchronous, synchronizing those things over time? So that, that's the only thought I had as you were talking about that, so I'll just let you think about that. And how do we, how do we capture what we want to accomplish? Yes, but where's the best place to capture it?
Yeah, it's a really great comment, and something that's come up through this process. I think it really boils down, and this was a really great comment that was made at Planning Policy Commission, they talked about a similar concept, I think, as it relates to utilities. But I think it really boils down to, like, maintaining it, as long as we're aware of where it's at. This document is really high-level. It's used by staff primarily, but also other folks will look at it just to verify, like, how policies came about, how regulations came about. So it's really a judgment call. Staff feels comfortable incorporating it where it makes sense. We can also have it in multiple places. We want to make sure that we're not having direct references to, like, standalone documents that could expire at some point, so we've actually, and I can touch on this later, but we've removed direct, like, links to specific documents, which will not last 20 years, obviously. Yeah, I mean, we feel comfortable if something is a topic like this, which is very interdisciplinary, we can certainly add it in multiple locations.
Is there any question?
Thank you, just a couple, most of them are comments. Goal B1 is, there was a change made at sidewalks on both sides of the street within a quarter-mile of transit stops as part of Tier 2. By the way, if we can't answer this tonight, that's fine, we can look into it outside of this meeting, but I'm curious what kind of impact that would have on Newport Way Northwest. I know our design of that street has only one side sidewalk, protect the hillside. So if there's not a response about, or if we're not sure what kind of impact that would have there, maybe just something to look in. Because I think that's, I think that's a commitment we've already made with that design, so just something that popped a flag with me. An actual question that I have is policy, or in goal F. Goal F4 was to partner with King County Metro and Sound Transit to enhance transit service options. They tab-supported it generally, but said maybe changing it to transit service providers in case of name changes. I just didn't see a response to that comment.
Yeah, it's a good comment. So this kind of goes back to what Chair Ray had mentioned about agencies dissolving as a potential. So from like a legal perspective, like, does calling out the specific transit agency name, is that better practice than just saying any transit agency that's serving Issaquah? So we're going to run that by legal to see, like, what, what they have to say about it.
Okay.
We currently feel like it's comfortable, like, other cities do it this way, but like, it's a really great point.
At the end of the day, you're right. This is a document that staff look at, but other stuff, it's not. So even if something changes, staff wouldn't be like, oh, no, it only says Sound Transit. Work with other ones, so, okay. Those are my only questions about the transportation.
Right. I think I'm entitled to one really dumb question each committee meeting. What is micromobility?
Love that you asked that question. So micromobility technically is just like a very small vehicle. In practice, it's like scooters, bikes, anything like that.
Okay. And then my more substantive question, dealing with particularly the G1s, particularly G1 traffic operations and intersections. What's the tie-in with concurrency, because I know that's on our horizon, too?
Yeah, it's a really great question. We, we are looking at updating our concurrency model. We will be just doing a minor update at first, and then we will look at if we want, like, how multimodal level service could be incorporated, so making sure that we're thinking about not just cars, but also the service needs of bikes, pedestrians, transit, all that. So we're looking into it, we're, we will be updating our concurrency process this year.
Okay, cool. Any other questions?
Sorry, next year. I apologize about that.
Any other questions? Anybody online? Did anyone want to speak? Anyone online? Okay. I was going to just ask Thomas, you want all the comments at the end, or you want them in blocks?
I'll defer to you. I was planning on taking it all at once at the end, but if it makes more sense to you.
We'll do questions at the end of the blocks, and we'll, we'll save comments at the end. All right, works good. Next block.
Okay, so next we'll talk about utilities and public services. So similar process, we're hoping to get your input on the first draft of the element, and these are nearly identical questions to what you've just seen. Are there any additional considerations for the Planning Policy Commission that they should study prior to finalizing their recommendations? Do the proposed changes fully meet the expectations of the utilities and public services element update? Are there any other topics for the administration to consider when making final edits? So for this utilities and public services element, again, this is an attempt to reduce redundancies, support the city's commitments to sustainability, and then to better coordinate with functional plans. So you may notice that the document is completely reorganized, and that was, again, to reduce redundancies that were sprinkled throughout the document. So hoping to just make it a little bit clearer. In terms of coordination, we are coordinating with recent functional plans, so several utilities plans have been updated. We also updated the street standards update. So this is, again, what design, what guides how we design roads, and utilities are often found in roads. There was also many utilities and public services type updates within the land use code. And the Issaquah Police Department has a policy manual that was updated in 2020, so reflecting that as well. We took this document to the Planning Policy Commission for their review. We got a lot of good feedback, and that feedback is also in the packet. And again, the, the changes that we're recommending tonight include minor updates and revisions, ways to reduce redundancies. We also want to, in coordination with state, regional, and county regulations, we also have policies that will further our climate resiliency and our ability to weather natural disasters, reflecting also our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, as well as our desire to improve equity with throughout the community. I'm actually going to pause here. I need a battery to charge my computer. Okay, back in business.
Back in business.
Yeah. I've just been talking so long, my computer's turned to die. Yeah, thanks very much. And so again, looking specifically at the utilities, public services element, you'll notice that it's been completely reorganized. Again, this is just to help out with the flow, reduce a lot of the clutter. There were several sort of legacy policies and goals that were carried over for many iterations of, of updates. It's really just kind of a cleanup effort with some revisions and just making it more applicable to today. You'll see that lots of these goals are aligned with previous goals, and they're sort of an amalgamation of themes that we've collected throughout the old document. We also have, with goal F, we are expanding it to include septic management, which was not a part of it previously. So for, for goal A, this is level service and future needs. The summary of this is, we're making changes to support implementation and reduce redundancies. For goal B, we're trying to consolidate and improve consistency and make sure that we're compliant with, with regulations through the county, as well as coordination with our ICAP. I do apologize, looks like my computer was not connected.
Want to, how long, five minutes? We're going to do another five-minute recess for technical support. We'll be back shortly. All right, Chance, I think we're ready to go. I like this. All right, we are back. Thomas, back in business.
Back in business. Thanks very much. I apologize for technical difficulties. So I will go back just to refresh what we're at. So again, updates to goal A, this is to support implementation and reduce redundancies. Goal B changes, we're hoping to consolidate, add consistency, and make sure that we're being compliant with regulations and, you know, coordinating with ICAP. With goal C, we're really just hoping to reduce redundancies on this one. This is related to service and coordination and collaboration. With goal D, changes to resource conservation, this is to support sustainability efforts, as well as reduce redundancies throughout the document. Goal E is about water utilities, and we're hoping to reduce redundancies and improve formatting. For goal F and G, lots of these changes are to improve service outcomes and to promote our conservation efforts. I'll pause here for questions.
Questions? The council president?
Just one, since this one was fairly straightforward. But there's one, policy D12, which is under Resource Conservation, that says, reduce material going to garbage by diverting more to recycle and compost regulations, programs, incentives, and education and outreach. We have, like, landfill diversion elsewhere, so I wasn't sure if we had chosen the word garbage, like, specifically. It's like, when I think of garbage, I think of someone's, like, individual garbage. So maybe this focus was more on the individual and less on broader landfill diversion. So my question is, I thought the word garbage was kind of an odd choice there, so what was the intent behind this?
I'm actually going to lean on Matt Ellis, who's with us remotely. He's our utilities engineering manager.
Sorry, I'm not able to attend tonight. I'm under the weather. But Matt Ellis, utility engineering manager. And on that one, I think it was just an oversight. So we are mainly, we are looking at reduce, reduction of solid waste as a whole, and diversion to recycling and compost for not just residential, but for all practices. So it might be just a wording, a thing that we can change.
Okay, thanks, Matt. I'm sorry you're under the weather, but thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions on this section? Okay. Let's move on then to capital facilities.
Again, we'll move into capital facilities, and you'll be asked the similar questions that you've been asked the previous. Any additional considerations for the PPC to study before finalizing their recommendations? Do the proposed changes meet your expectations for the capital facilities element update? And are there any additional topics that the administration should consider when making final edits? So capital facilities, again, hoping to reduce redundancies and support the city's commitment to sustainability and better coordinate with functional plans. So as it relates to capital facilities, we have several utilities plans that have been updated throughout the last couple of years. Street standards, land use code update. Street standards, land use code update. Again, we have the IPD Police Policy Manual, as well as some updates to Mobility Master Plan, Parks, the Capital Improvement Program, the Transportation Improvement Program, and some updates to the Sewer Master Plan, which is in development. This is how the document is organized. We have three sections, level of service, sustainability, and results and accountability. We took this to the Planning Policy Commission for their review. They had some really good comments, which we've incorporated in here. And the administration is recommending that we make the following changes to reduce redundancy, support our sustainability commitments, and then also improve our implementation. So they can really be summarized on a couple of slides. Just some really minor updates to level of service as well as consistency with regulations in Goal D. We have some minor updates to really attempt to improve implementation from the finance perspective, city budgeting, and then making sure that revenues are priority. There are also some topics that were based off Title 18. So making sure that we're promoting sustainability and equitable practices and making sure that the periodic update goals are aligned. So just to sort of wrap up these three element topics, timing and next steps, the council's going to get another shot at this, and then we're hoping to adopt in Q3 next year. I'll just stop on this slide. This is a summary of the three elements and hoping to get your feedback on these three.
Any, before we go into feedback, any questions related to capital facilities? Or the timeline? Dip Council President?
Really quick one on a level of service one, policy B nine. This is the one that just talks about how there are five intersections that can operate at a level of service of E or F. And I was just curious, curious why, why that is. Is it just because there's so much beyond our control at those particular areas?
That's exactly right. Yeah, those, those level of, level service E intersections are typically the WashDOT intersections. We, we really don't have much control over those, so.
Have any questions? Well, let's, let's do some feeding back then. Direction. Do you want to go first?
All right. If it's okay with you, I've kind of like flagged places of feedback in the section, so I'm just going to go through it. So bear with me. Some of them have already been answered and addressed already. So starting with the transportation element, this wasn't, should have just wrote it all out. This wasn't a change in the transportation element, but one of the policies in Goal A, proactive safety, is about developing and adapting a vision zero ordinance, which is about pedestrian safety and reducing collisions. I was, I think it might, and I don't know if it needs to live in here, or maybe it's more on the implementation side of staff, but it'd be good for us to have some language about how we learn from the successes and shortcomings of cities who have tried to do this. Seattle being a prime example of a lot of shortcomings in their Vision Zero plan, even the Seattle Department of Transportation Secretary or Director, whatever they call it, saying that a lot of their program is very siloed and lives in kind of one part of SDOT and not throughout the whole city. So I don't know if that's good feedback for this language or just something to be mindful of during implementation. Just wanted to make sure to say that. Because I know Bellevue has had problems with that too, so. Their Vision Zero plan. All right, Goal B. There. I think that was just agreeing. I don't know if that's full C. Oh, it's this one. There also wasn't a update to this one. The last one of Goal B, policy B six, support the implementation of the Park Strategic Plan, including the development of the Green Necklace. I know this just because I'm also on the, what's the other committee that I'm on? Planning, Development and Environment Committee. And Councilmember Hunt would say that we need stronger language around the Green Necklace here. So my suggestion is we just remove the word support and we do implement the Park Strategic Plan, including the development of the Green Necklace. And I think that regardless of what we do here at the committee, that she'll want to do that once it comes to the full council anyways. So I agree with her anyways. I think we should be a little bit stronger there. So to remove support, Goal C. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, consider Goal C five is the one that's a partner with Sound Transit and bring light rail service to ISQAB by adopting supportive land use policies. One of the feedback of TAB and PPC was to consider specifying what those land use policies might be. You said earlier in the presentation not that we wouldn't want to reference specific plans, but the light rail plan that we just looked at did talk about some internal policies that we should consider and start framing conversations to prepare for light rail, including land use. Maybe we, maybe we be specific and reference some of that work, or again, maybe that's more of an implementation aspect. I just wanted to provide that feedback. Goal D, again, this is the, the one about sidewalks on both sides within a quarter mile of transit stops. Let's just check and make sure that doesn't have any adverse impact on our plans for Newport Way Northwest. Goal E was the one about increasing, Goal E two was the one about increasing use of electric pedal assisted bicycles. I know PPC wanted to distinguish e-bikes from mopeds. I would actually rather go in the opposite direction of being more inclusive of any kind of E-assisted micromobility option, especially because over the next 20 years, we have no idea what those potential alternatives are going to look like. So I think maybe if we say pedal assisted bicycles, that's fine. I would, I would advocate that we also include and other emerging micromobility, similar emerging micromobility tools or something like. And that is actually all my feedback on transportation. Are we doing all the elements? Just keep it going? Okay. All right, sorry. The other ones, I was just very passionate about that element. So there's a lot more there. The other ones are a lot more straightforward in my mind, and that's a testament to the reorganization and the great work that you and staff did. So it sounds like for the, the utilities and public services element, we're going to look at that goal, our policy D 12, which says garbage, and just make sure that's aligned with what we truly mean by that. And I, I thought there was another policy later on in the element that talked about land waste diversion. So that, that might even be one we consider striking just for redundancy purposes, but I'll leave that up to all of you. I think that was all that I had on utility, utilities and public services, except to say that the new section on septic sewer is perfectly aligned with the conversation that we had at committee last month. So just wanted to say that on camera. Thank you. And capital facilities element. Well, that was just a question. We might actually be good on the. Oh, I think actually just a somewhat of a disagreement with some PPC feedback. So Goal F, which is around sustainability, seemed like there was maybe some PPC, PPC conversation around it being difficult to keep track of implementation of sustainability of its living in multiple elements. I don't think that's necessarily true, especially because these, these documents are really high-level policy documents that staff are looking to. And sometimes you're just looking at one element. So it'd be good to have some guidance around sustainability when you're focused in that one element. So I just wanted to say for the record, I'm not, I'm not concerned with that. Those are my specific tweaks and feedback points. Don't think I have any additional topics for the administration to continue. We did get the administration to consider. We did get some community feedback, and there were two points. One was whether, yeah, I think it was the second. Utilities and public services, potentially removing the references to when feasible with regard to city development and, and there being a concern that there might be different paths for public and private development. And I just wanted to say, I don't necessarily feel that concern myself. I think it's important in the role of the city to set policy for throughout the city and to be responsive with the community and their priorities, but it's also our role to be fiduciaries and sometimes those to inflict when we're looking at our own properties. Something to think about for the administration, I guess, but I just wanted to say that I don't feel strongly about making those changes and removing that language. And then also, if you think that there was also an ask to include some reference to stream projects and wetland enhancement projects that I thought potentially could be useful feedback. So I just wanted to elevate that here. And if you think that should exist anywhere in these documents or if that's more patient part, great. And then just to close out, I want to say thank you for all the incredible work you've done on this. This is a lot of paper and, you know, Councilmember DeMichele and I are both on two committees. So we have had to look at lots of these packets over the last few months, and they are all equally thick and demonstrate the hard work that our staff are doing to make sure that we're aligning all of our plans updates with our new plans, community visioning and all that stuff. So I just really wanted to say I appreciate this. This could not have taken. I'm sure this took a long time to put together and prepare for these conversations and the number of touches that all these things have had with boards and commissions too. Good job.
Councilmember DeMichele, any comments?
Okay, I'm totally embarrassed and chagrined because my comments will be very brief. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hall, for the thorough review of the items that you mentioned. I would do a plus one on the stronger wording for the Green Necklace. I know Councilmember Hunt has expressed that she wants stronger language there, and I support that as well, so. And then I've already expressed the additional item that I would like to see considered at least in the transportation element. And other than that, I defer to Councilmember Hall. He did a really great review. I did not have any other additions that I wanted to bring to your attention. And I do join him as well in saying fantastic job. Look at the amount of work that you brought before us tonight. So thank you again for just all the work that you do and that all the team does. It's, it's really impressive. So thank you.
I have to be doubly, I'm not going to say anything because I think you guys did a spectacular job of going, going through the document in great detail. The one thing I really, I do want to say is on the appreciation thing, the documents, you know, and I haven't been around as long as Hola has, but I've been around for a while now. And the documents are getting so much better and so much easier to read and so much easier to follow. And that's, that's not happening by accident. And so taking the time to do the cleanup is really delivering great results. So thank you guys for, for doing some of that very tedious work, but it really pays super dividends. So that's all I've got. Thomas, do you have what you need?
I've got everything I need. Thanks very much for your comments. Appreciate it.
We, at the end of the agenda, any announcements, any comments? Nope. Right, then we're going to adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen. Thank you very much.